You like your mayor?
No, it's just, I'm glad, I'm just worried about future weather. I'm not saying it.
I'd like to call the work session of October the 3rd to order. Before we begin, Mayor, if you would, I'm gonna allow the mayor some time to give us an update on the storm situation, where we are.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, council members. If you'll give me just one moment, I wanna pull up some information so that I am giving you an accurate update and don't wanna give you any bad information. Okay. All right, so, as you know, Wednesday night, we received a storm event, a rain event that was significant. At this point, it looks like it's setting some records locally and even more so to the east and to the north of us. What I wanna do is I'm gonna talk about things in a couple categories right now: private property, public infrastructure, cleanup operations, current cleanup operations, and donations, and what people can do to help. First things first, we saw private property damage citywide. In most areas, it was not significant. In most areas, it was, you know, a little bit of water through ceilings, a little bit of water in the basement. However, in certain areas, it was significant. In the downtown area, we saw a significant water inundation in businesses, some of which was through ceilings, some of which was storm waters that rose under doors and into floors. In the Delaware Avenue area between Rose and Isabella, we saw significant water damage, particularly Saturday and Sunday. Middle Neck Lane area, we saw significant flooding as well. And on Richwill Drive, we saw some significant flooding. The Church Street area, several businesses saw significant flooding, including RD Career &amp; Sons and Bosman's Floor Coverings. And in the Canal Woods area, on the south side of town, we saw significant flooding. As of right now, there were a sick total of 68 condemnations. Fifty-three of those were in Canal Woods. Fourteen of those were on Delaware Avenue and Rose, Mac, and Tangier, and one of those was on Richwill. As, Mr. President, you know, most of the Canal Woods condemnations have already been lifted. The only ones that remain are three on the ground floor of Building A and three on the ground floor of Building G. All fourteen on Delaware Avenue are still in place, and the one on Richwill is still in place with a partial wall collapse. With respect to public infrastructure, actually, I'll stop for a second. Any questions or comments or anything that you've seen, because I know the three of you in particular were already out there looking in your own districts? Anything additional that you've seen? Private property damage? Okay.
Yeah, just one lot that was flooded. I talked to the neighbor.
Does it look like it's receding? And no damage to the house, right?
No, he went up to his top step but didn't come in, so he said it was close.
I saw a couple houses like that. Public infrastructure, Mitchell Pond Dam saw some minor damage. I think it's worth mentioning, and Mike Molds mentioned this today, that when you look at all of our ponds in the area, our ponds are not designed for flood control. You know, these are ponds to look at. They're ponds to be pretty, you know, they're not flood controlled. We just don't have the elevation change around here to get that. So you see all these ponds and think, that should be able to manage all the water, but they're not designed for that. Delaware Avenue, storm drain had a significant clog, and that's taken some work to alleviate. North Park Drive, I'm sorry, go ahead, April.
Wasn't that some years ago cleaned out?
Yes. Anytime that there's a storm, not even this significant, but anytime there's a storm and things get washed, something can get in there that starts to clog and opening, and it just fills right up.
Okay, so, how often are we gonna clean those now?
So we clean out storm drains. It's one of our top metrics that we track, that I track every other week, and we clean out storm drains constantly, every week. We're always doing it. So it's a constant process. It never stops. But in a storm like this, it looks like what happened with Delaware Avenue with the 24-inch drain is that some big stuff washed out in the heavy rains and just jammed it up, and that's why it took days for it to back up into a problem. You know, it wasn't a problem on Wednesday night or Thursday morning. It was a problem several days later because the clog from the first storm, or that first rain event, backed up a lot of stuff, you know, just debris. It looked like, it looked like leaves and sticks and brush and all sorts of things, some trash, you know, it all just washed right to that point.
Mitchell Landing?
Yes.
Is another place, not the road, but the apartment, that has some clogged drains also.
Some clogged storm drains?
Yes.
Okay. North Park Drive, a portion of that washed out, which included the urban greenway and included power, included the electric utility. So that is under repair, emergency contract. City Park Fountain experienced some electrical damage. As you know, we, that was in the budget for some repairs anyway, so it looks like we'll be spending some money in non-cosmetic, but thank you. Structural repairs, thank you, Chris. The zoo and park experienced significant damage. The, as Mr. Molds has explained to me, the classification of that would be more like cleanup than damage, really. Two trees fell in the zoo, one on the owl enclosure and one on a fence, and the damage was pretty minor to those two pieces of infrastructure. But throughout, there's, you know, sand and mud deposits and, you know, paths that are washed away and landscaping that's been damaged. So we're looking at more as cleanup, but I wanted to categorize it as, as damage because it was, I think, pretty significant. Station 1 and Station 16 both had roof leaks, and we're working to assess exactly what that amounted to right now. This building had roof leaks, and our Housing and Community Development Office had a roof leak. Salisbury Fire Department lost some wheel chocks, and I only mention that because the individual wheel chocks are expensive. But it looked like as they went through deep water, they've kinda washed out of the trucks. Couple things that I wanted to mention in terms of future repairs, and these are things that we can do to avoid some of the damage that we saw. One is the Cody Cox Stormwater Project, which is already under construction, and if this had been a few weeks later?
Later.
We wouldn't have had all the flooding that we saw over there sadly, which is a real shame and incredibly sad. The Waste Order Treatment Plant, which saw, you know, some volume overflows, nothing, only clean effluent, and nothing into the river that was untreated. However, that wouldn't happen if we had finished the project that's underway right now. It would be able to sustain the volume of, it saw about 19.1 million gallons per day, I think was the highest concentration. It's, the current design is designed to manage 13.8 million gallons per day, so of the outflow into the state box, which is where the state confirms that it's clean. Fitzorder Street, we would just need a couple of carjacks to elevate it. Fitzorder Street is just low, and there's not too much that we can do about it, however...
But they did pretty good.
Fitzorder Street did better than a lot of places, didn't it?
Yeah, it did good compared to what it has been. I was surprised.
Yes, yeah, so we count our blessings there. Germania Circle did better than it has done in the past, which is good. However, we still have the project, April, you're well aware. We still have the project there that is ready to go with, you know, we get the response when we do the walk around and the mailings. Main Street Stormwater Management Project, which would've helped downtown, would've helped businesses on Market, Baptist, Poplar Hill, Main, and Camden Streets. That project started construction today. Emerson and Middle Neck Branch culverts under the Norfolk Southern Railroad. There was a cleanout that was done by Norfolk Southern, but, you know, Tom and I, I know in the middle of the night, one night, saw, you know, the outflow at Emerson, and it's constrained. It's constrained. So it's a project to put on our watch list for future stormwater projects. Mitchell Pond culverts that we talked about at the dam, and ultimately, where it really pinches in addition to that is all the way underneath of Chesapeake Shipbuilding. So, and you're talking about a long distance back to the river, but potentially, that long line all the way from Mitchell Pond through Chesapeake Shipbuilding to the river could be, because there's a 48-inch asphalt pipe that goes underneath of there.
Now, could I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Seeing that happen at Mitchell Pond, is that, I wanna say, and I'm not for sure I don't know, but is that a hazard as far as the rest of the street is concerned?
You mean, is...
Mitchell Road, yeah.
The effects of it?
Yeah.
Is Mitchell Road currently, you know, hazardous or precarious?
Yes.
I don't have an assessment. Tom, do you have?
The extent of the damage will be mostly limited to the area that washed out. So as a part of this washout across the road on the downflow side, it'll keep the sand and cake away, but everything that's on it...
Other side closer to Nanicoke Road is probably unimpacted in any way.
I remember one reason that Mike explained that it was in a better state was because there is a clay base under Mitchell Road. Isn't that right, Tom? A clay base, which typically it's sand, so you get the washout really quickly, and then you, like North Park Drive, it just collapses. But, so we'll have to do the repair to the area that did wash out underneath, but I guess most of it, a clay plug, I think is what he called it. Most of it was saved because of that clay structure underneath, which is part of the dam design.
Okay.
Canal Woods, there could be an alternative culvert created or additional bucketing, riprap, you name it. But I wanted to put that in our, it may not be, you know, a city project or a city responsibility, but I want us to be aware of things that could prevent certain of the flooding that we saw. And the City Park, one of the things that could've avoided that is if we tore out all the dams. But it also may mean we lose water through the City Park and we just have a mud flat. So there's downsides to alleviating some of these things, and perhaps the upside with the City Park and the flooding that happened there is, we have a park and not houses there. Fortunately, our zoo animals were fine, but the, you know, if we had had houses there built that low, we'd have had a real problem. We'd have had a real problem. Cleanup operations are ongoing right now. Public Works is removing barricades. They're still doing inspections of every dam in the city, cleaning up storm drains and inlets. There is street sweeping ongoing right now. We're developing a list of mulch landscaping and planting items that need to be brought in, as well as surface for trails and paths. There's a bulk pickup scheduled for Monday, because obviously, there're gonna be some folks that are not on this list that, you know, have wet basements and are tossing out carpets and things like that. And then Housing and Community Development, our code enforcement officers are conducting windshield survey of the city right now. They're getting a lot of mold complaints. I don't think mold grows that fast, but they're getting a lot of mold complaints right now. There's a couple potholes that have been identified out on state highways, so we're just tracking those and trying to communicate those to State Highway, and communicating anything we can to the county. We also did put out information that Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service, at their office on Riverside Drive, and Salisbury Police Department Headquarters will be collecting any donations. We're looking for non-perishables, we're looking for clothing for children, all the way through adults. Yes?
I have clothing.
You have?
I have a, well, I've collected for a young lady who lost her daughter, but I do have storage that has clothes in it, so if people need some clothing for their kids or whomever, I do have a storage. All they have to do is contact me.
Can I give you and put out publicly the Red Cross number as well?
Yeah.
Because I think we're gonna hand over that donation operation to the Red Cross, rather than the city run it?
Yeah.
Just so, because it should be irrespective of city boundaries, and, you know, we wanna help people no matter what. So Red Cross number is 410-202-3831. And they may set up an alternative location, but right now, right now, that, the two locations that I mentioned, and really, three, April, you, the Police Department, and Salisbury Neighborhood Housing are all willing to accept items and then deliver them to, to those in need.
And if anyone likes to donate, they could call me, and I could, they could go in that storage area, because I have a big enough storage area, it could, it's a 10 by 20.
Okay, you got a storage unit.
Yeah, I have a storage unit that I'm putting the stuff in.
Excellent. So we're looking for toys, furniture, pet food, household necessities, toiletries, non-perishable food and clothing of all sizes, from children to adult women and men. Salisbury Zoo's gonna remain closed today. It'll reopen tomorrow. Today, we were just doing cleanup. And I'm glad you mentioned the storm drain, the backed-up storm drain that you saw in Mitchell Landing or storm drains. If anyone sees a storm drain that's backed up, 410-548-3170. Call Public Works, 410-548-3170, and they'll get right on it. You can also use the city app if you have it on your phone. Anything else specific I can answer? I've got copies of all the press releases that we sent out, trying to keep people informed if you all want those, to pour through the details, but I'm fairly certain everybody's seen all of that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, I've met a lot of our Public Works people out on the street, as well as the Housing Department, and I wanted to tell you that they did a fantastic job. And we're very lucky to have the people who are as dedicated and committed as we do. And I've heard many citizens come up to me and say, what a great job they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, I must say the same. You've done a remarkable job. You've stepped out of your comfort zone, and even when I thought you were crying, it was from your work diligently, so I really appreciate that, and it looks good coming from our government here in Salisbury, putting forth the effort to, you know, do the work for our citizens. So I appreciate everything that you've done and the City of Salisbury.
Thank you so much. I'm proud of our team, you know, being able to communicate and identify things that we've seen in our neighborhoods and get it to the right people so that Public Works can address it.
And I'd like to take a moment and recognize the mayor's will. A lot of people don't realize, literally from Wednesday, probably through the weekend, the mayor's probably, may have slept maybe one or two hours. He has been out in our city all night, working with Public Works, so he's seen firsthand what they've been doing, and I thank you for, for your hard work and appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor. Can I just say that if I've slept one to two hours, Tom Stevenson slept a half to one hour.
We thank you also.
Tom's done an incredible job captaining the ship. Everybody has.
Okay. First up on our regular agenda, a resolution to provide a payment in lieu of taxes for Green Street Housing. Mayor?
One moment, please.
Okay.
So, as we discussed with the resolution of support a few weeks ago, the next step in the Lot 30 development was to discuss a payment in lieu of taxes per the city code. This is pro forma for affordable housing projects. This is a little bit different because it's also city-owned property, and it's also, so there are no tax dollars associated with it today, but it also will have a commercial piece, the ground floor market that we've discussed, and some market rate housing. So what's been proposed with the 60 units there is a proposal to pay, where is it, $400 per unit, per year? I'm sorry. Yep, $400 per unit, per year, for 40 years would be the payment in lieu of taxes. And, you know, we, one, I think, again, per our code with respect to affordable housing, this is sort of the normal course. However, I think it's also great that we can quantify the amount that we can expect on a property that's currently city-owned.
Right.
And once you do the math, it's a good number. It's a good number.
It's a good number, yes.
Is this the project that you and I were talking about one day? Is this the green?
This is the one on Lot 30, bound by Fitzorder or bound by Main, Route 50, where the Brewer River sign is.
Okay, yeah, that's what, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the project.
So 12,000 square feet of retail ground floor, you know, looking at a market hall, some sort of public market or grocery on the ground floor, and then 54 units of varying levels of affordability. Workforce is their target, which is 60 to 100, 80 to 120% of median income, and then the remainder would be unrestricted.
Yeah, that's the area I was talking about, putting that, like a little momentum on monument or something up.
Yes.
Specifying that there was black-owned property and black-owned entrepreneurship down in that area.
That's right, we did talk about that.
Yes.
So, so in fact, as we move from the land disposition contract that we have with them to settlement over the next year or so, I mean, that'll, that takes a little time, as we've learned. But as we do, we can work that into the contract documents, and we'll reflect on these notes and these records to make sure that we do that.
Okay.
Other questions? April, you okay?
I'm fine.
Good. Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Holland with the annexation request.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For you is another annexation request, annexation of a parcel located on Only Drive. This is an old request, goes back almost 10 years, 2007. It was owned by Mr. Fenzel. He's, can't be with us. He's away at sea or somebody's a merchant marine. I can have Mr. Parker back here if you have any questions.
You were in high school then, right?
This all started over a failed subject system located at properties, which was currently now there, a single-family dwelling, and he was notified by the Wycomica Health Department that, that they would not, would not be allowed to re-establish the field, have to connect to the city. Again, city requires to be annexed. So what Mr. Fenzel did, he's, he's proposing a nine-unit development on this parcel. It's indicated in the concept development plan.
It's on page 16, map's on 16.
And the aerial map contains both those lots, 143, and we see the red line right put down there, because the 145's not on there. I just wanted to make sure you got that. An overview of the entire parcel. These would be nine townhouse-type apartment units, you know, with the parking, stormwater management, curb gutter, and sidewalk. What this is, is for me to get your approval to continue to move this forward to the next step, to go back to the planning and zoning for, for the zoning approval, and if you have any preliminary questions.
Mr. Bowden, question?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
We have consensus then, move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mayor, you're up again.
Funny how that happens.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item that you are seeing here is a conservation easement for the property that we'll henceforth call the Naylor Mill Park. So as you may recall, as I'm sure you recall, we had a discussion with Wycomica County. We agreed to hear a proposal for expansion of ball fields there. There was significant public opposition from trail users. There's quite a trail system back there in the Naylor Mill Park, and there's, we now have an agreement, we're working on an agreement for a management contract or arrangement similar to what we have on the City Park, in terms of managing the trails with a volunteer group. Eastern Shore branch of the International Mountain Biking Association does that. So this would be the largest park in the city system, and what we're hoping to do is conserve it so that it can't be developed in the future and will be protected. There's a similar easement, a historic easement over the City Park. This would be a conservation easement. It simply says essentially, and you can read the specifics, that other than a few specific things, the development rights of that park are taken away. You can't, you can't build it. And the Lower Shore on it, and the Lower Shore Land Trust would be the holder of the easement, and they would co-hold it with the Maryland Environmental Trust. And all that does is, it provides additional legal backing from the state of Maryland's Attorney General. So if the City of Salisbury, you know, we're all dead and gone, and somebody says, no, it's time to develop that park.
Trust me.
You know, the Attorney General would...
What's that?
We'd have the, or our memories would have the power of the Attorney General to, to protect the park. So it's, it's not a frequent tool that's used inside municipalities, particularly because most of these organizations and entities, even the state agency, use this as a way to stop growth outside of, you know, sprawl areas and, you know, not stop it for nefarious purpose, but for protection of environmental habitat, you know, natural habitat or agriculture. But, but in this case, it's something we want to be a park. So if we agree that we want to keep it a park, then this is a useful tool for us to say, you know, we'll protect it for generations, and, because zoning can be changed at any moment. So that being the purpose.
Okay. I think, personally, I think it's a great thing. Good afternoon.
My apologies, the electrician came to my house and parked behind me in the driveway, and I didn't have the heart to ask him to leave.
He would never come back.
He's probably busy.
We are on the resolution for the Naylor Mill Conservation Easement. And we just ask about questions.
I think I do, and I, and I may be in the wrong area, but will this affect the channel back there at all? I know I had a meeting with the county in reference to this last week, and I just wanted to know if it would have any interference with the channel back there, because I know they're putting softball fields back in the area?
Well, so, so there's, one of the next steps is, they have a soccer field, or they have a couple soccer fields?
Soccer fields.
And part of one of their soccer fields, and how this ever happened, I don't know, but part of one of their soccer fields, if you look at a map, is off their property, and it's on city property. And so there's a big piece of open area that is, and that piece is not in this conservation easement, so we cut it out. And we're gonna transfer, that'll come to you, we're gonna propose transferring that little piece that their soccer field is on back to them. We don't, you know, we don't need it, we don't want it. But my understanding is that their plan is to finish those out as softball fields and move their soccer field somewhere else. So it would be all softball fields, the whole park on their... So it would be all softball fields, the whole park on their park. The county park would be all softball, if that's my understanding. The other thing is that there's a strip on the left-hand side of the road as you drive in that is not included in this conservation easement. And right now, it's nothing. It's just grass. But the county has offered to build parking for us at a future date if ever there's a conflict. I don't think there will be a conflict because I don't think we have that many people riding the trails in the Naylor Mill Park. You know, at the same time, the softball fields are jammed. But if there ever was, there would be parking along there. And as part of the agreement to give the county back that little piece of land where they've got softball fields, they're going to give us parking. I don't think we'll come to those days, but if we do, we've got a, we've got a way to handle it. The channel, are you talking about the creek that kind of runs through? So this would protect that creek. The only thing that we're allowed to do basically in here that you wouldn't normally or be allowed to do if you took like a base off-the-shelf template for a conservation easement is we're allowed to drill wells for our drinking water. Because this is, the original acquisition, my understanding, and Jim, you probably know this better than I do, but the original acquisition of this parcel was to protect drinking water. So, so we're allowed to, you know, this says that we're allowed to drill wells for our drinking water if we need to, and do whatever we have to do to make that happen. Not that we want to go cutting down trees to do that, if you had to, to get in a well.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, for contamination purposes and people, you know, trash and, you know, when you have a large crowd of people, build up trash. So I was just worried about that, you know, becoming contaminated in any kind of way.
Sure. Well, and the next thing that we'll do is, one, we'll do that county piece, and two, we'll do an MOU with the Mountain Biking Association, like they have in the park, the city park, and we'll bring that to council. If this, if you guys are comfortable with this, we'll start.
And those guys have done a great job.
Yeah, they really have.
They work. I mean, they do a lot of work.
Keep it open and keep it clean.
The only thing I'll say is I've seen a little bit, we saw some, where they've got the bridge, some significant washout around there.
Well, that, well, the one bridge, there was a group of kids that came and moved it up and moved it.
And that's the bridge I'm talking.
And they went and they put it back, and it might have been the same one because it was moved. But somebody went in and did it.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't, the mountain bike crew found it.
The washout I'm talking about, I just said, same bridge, but it just happened because of the storm.
The storm.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? We have consensus then?
Yes.
Mr. Iden? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Employee handbook, Jeannie, is Jeannie here?
She is. She's.
Oh, cool.
Hi, Jeannie, how are you?
I'm great. I'm glad to sell.
Very good.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see you all too. You weathered the storm.
Yes. The floor is yours.
The particular policies that we're bringing forward to you today, these are changes that have taken place either through the budget process or the law has changed, where they required you to have an expanded version. The first item on the list is the policy for equal employment opportunity. It's basically a statement that's in the employee handbook, and it's less than one page. But a large portion of it was dedicated to sexual harassment. Sexual harassment has now been expanded to sexual harassment along with other unlawful forms of harassment. And so Legit, which is our, it's an insurance company that we use, and we pay a certain amount of money to them to protect us from lawsuits later on, did make the suggestion that we expand the policy. So we've moved a certain portion of sexual harassment out of O-one, O-two, equal employment opportunity, and put it under the sexual harassment policy itself. There was one policy that was dedicated to that particular issue. In addition to that, in O-one, O-two, we also added verbiage to include other unlawful forms of harassment as part of the equal employment opportunity policy. Questions about that particular policy? So there's really two policies that are involved with that. That's the O-one, O-two, and O-six, ten, sexual and other unlawful harassment. So it affects both of those. The next policy that we'd like to see changed is O-three, O-one on wages and increases. And in particular, this year, at the budget, at the beginning of the budget process, the mayor introduced his plan for hour increases, and that would be that annually we would get a step increase. And in addition to that, the mayor also wanted to expand the wage scale that we have now from twenty-five steps to thirty steps. And that was done in his introduction of the salary and wage program this year's budget year. So what we needed to do is go to this particular policy and make those type of changes, and then introduce them here so that we can change them in our employee handbook. So that is that.
Question on that one?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, what are the performance appraisal levels? So I know it says here with a step increase annually with a satisfactory performance appraisal, is there, are there different levels of?
Their satisfactory would be a total, overall score of three, which means you meet the standard.
Okay.
There is a number four, which is above the standard.
Okay.
There's also a two, and a one, and a zero. They're all.
So you have to hit the satisfactory to get the step?
To average a satisfactory?
Yes.
What about the fourth one? Is there an increase in pay, or is it just the same?
Well, there is the opportunity within this policy now to bring forward what we would call a meritorious increase.
Gotcha.
But again, that would have to be brought to the city council at budget time.
There's also an opportunity to do cost of living increase if, you know, if we found we're getting out of step, which I know happens from time to time. But what this does is it, it does, you know, kind of like what the federal and state government does, it just essentially says that, you know, there's a modest year of service increase. A modest acknowledgement of, you gave us a good year, there's a modest increase. And it takes, you know, it might otherwise be kind of a stair step up, like occasionally. You know, it's just regularized and stuff.
But there, there is, it still does not take away from us the ability to.
Nope. Yeah, it would.
To what?
To do whatever we wanted to do at the mayor or council level.
In other words, it is, it's, it's in the policy, but if, God forbid, we went into another Black Monday event.
It essentially means that I have to write the budget.
Right.
It essentially means that I'm supposed to write the budget showing it, but if we have to.
Freeze. Yeah, we still have to pay.
My, my question was actually for Mr. Tillman. Are we codifying a pay raise?
Here? No, the, as I understand it, when the budget was set up, there's a minimum and a maximum for each position.
Correct.
And so what you're doing is you, assuming, you are codifying that assuming the person gets the satisfactory job performance, that they would move to the next step the following year, and that would have to be budgeted.
So what's, let me ask you this question, and then what's the difference of just putting it in when, when the budget comes? I'm worried about this because after six years of performance evaluations, there wasn't a single person that got anything under a three point one in six years. Now, that may have been my fault. And Jake, with the mayor, with his, his, his training and with his expertise is, he may enjoy writing those things and really barreling down into the minutia of, in my, in my experience, no one's ever gotten less than a three. And I am worried that, from my experience, if we write this in here, there are going to be over four hundred employees who are automatically going to think that they're going to get raises. Now, that's not true. But it will be the particular case. So I was just, my only question was, and codifying is not the correct word because codifying would be making it law. But putting it in there, I was just concerned.
Sets expectations?
I just, you know, to me, if, if any mayor, not you, not me, if we could effectively teach our employees that their best effort increases property values, which increase the budget, which makes it more likely that they will get a raise, I'd do a whole employee handbook around that, but I don't know whether or not I'd write in here.
Well, this, which, if you look at lines twelve through fourteen, it says, all wage determinations are subject to the city's budgetary process. That's, and so, so if you don't budget it, it's not going to happen. But if you do budget it, then the amount that they would get would be what would be set.
Is there any way that we could ask that be put in bold and in all capital letters in several different colors so that somebody noticed it in the employee handbook?
Clearly that.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I had, I've spoken with the mayor about it, and I had my, my, the same kind of concern. However, I think the thing that I see that sort of maybe the protection is that, in my understanding, and I've been told, is that there have been metrics set up to measure. You don't hit your number, you can't get the number. If, when we're assuming that the metrics are correct and everything else. But I think a metric-driven process allows this to become simplified. However, I, I hear your concern, and I.
And I'll also say this, and this is, shows my incredible confidence in the mayor. If the mayor was, if you, Jake Day, the mayor, was doing the performance evaluations on every single solitary employee we had, I'd say this system's going to work.
I wouldn't have anything else to do.
He wouldn't have anything else to do. But I, I, I worry, my worry is that with that many department heads and that many things, that, that uniformity, and I would say if anybody is going to do uniformity well, it's going to be you and not me. But uniformity across it, I don't know whether or not you can guarantee it, and. What I don't want to do is have an employee time, and I will say this, and I preface this with a pre-apology that I missed them when they were here the last time, the employee groups. But I don't want employee groups to sit down in front of us, and the first thing they say is take out this handbook and point to this and say, you said. Because I think we're all well aware of the own, the microcosm that we live in as employees of the city, that something gets overheard in a hallway, and three weeks later, you're trying to tamp it down because somebody heard somebody say, I'll go with what the group wants to do with this. This is, I, this is the only thing in this entire agenda that I sat around thinking about solely because of my personal experience with it. That's all.
Well, you've done it.
If I could add something.
Please.
In the last year, I have worked personally with brand-new supervisors, one-on-one, on how to conduct a performance evaluation. I have had six evaluations that received an overall less than three, meaning like a two point five eight, and they had to be reevaluated ninety days later in those particular areas. And we have them on a schedule. They get their annual review. Thirty days before it's due, we send out the list, the forms, the job description, and then they fill in the blanks, and they rate them. If we get a performance evaluation back in our office that has high marks on it, and it doesn't have a comment to go with it as the instructions tell them, it goes back. It's not considered complete.
Jeannie, is there any, and these are my other two questions. I wasn't even going to bring them up. You said something that triggered. A three for the person who's moving cash from one place to the next in finance. Now granted, they're on a different part of the pay scale, and I understand this given the importance of a job. I just worry that, that the feeling will be that it's easier to get a three over in this department than it is over there to get a three in another department. The other concern I have is that, that when we write job descriptions, and we've all written thousands of them, is that they have become so generic now that it's almost impossible to know what you're asking the employee to do except for the title at the top of it. And then everything, you know, the last one always says, and duties assigned, you know.
As required.
Yeah. It is, it, sometimes for me, it was just easier instead of delving this far all the way down into the last person in the rung, and then to just say that if we have enough money, it'll be a one percent. Conversely, I understand that when we don't get to do that, then we're, then we're tasked with, oh, my gosh, we have to do another pay study, and that's enough to make all of us want to jump into. So it would be nice to be able to say, yes, every year you're going to get, you know, your one-year service. I just, my only worry was legally, I understand. I just legally, I just didn't want. I didn't want us to get in trouble legally writing it, and I didn't want us to get into trouble with employees who are coming to get, you know, in the grocery store, but you said. And I, you know, of course, I'd say, tell me what else is written in the handbook. And if it's like my handbook, I'm not going to be able to tell you anything that's in the handbook, honestly speaking.
It's tied to the budget.
Yeah, that it should, yeah, I don't know. You all, I'll go with the group consensus.
Mr. Mayor, you.
I've got four things that I want to bring up, you know, I think, I mean, this is, your points are, are, no, no, I think, no, I think they're spot on. And, and it's something I've wrestled with. There's just a couple thoughts that I'd like to bring up. One, you know, we are looking at alternative performance evaluation models. And we've talked about merit-based, we've talked to pay, you know, we've talked about a lot of different options. But one of the things that we're looking at is just, how do we evaluate success? And how do we measure it, and what is a successful performance evaluation for a year look like? And it's, it's a tough thing to measure, and you, there's always, in a big organization, there's always an attempt to make, you know, apples and kitty cats look the same. But it's impossible. So, so sometimes you need something that's a little more flexible, but also probably happens with a little more regularity, you know, with some quarterly feedback opportunities. So we're looking at that. The other thing is supervisor training. And that's something that we're doing a lot of research on right now, is instituting some frontline and mid-level supervisor training because, you know, while we've got great people, you know, our leaders who are down there on the front lines are influencing things far more than I, I am, you know, in my, out of my office, or, you know, far more than a department head is. And those jobs are important, but that first-line supervisor shapes what life is like for that, you know, that person who's in, you know, public works or police department, fire, wherever. So looking at those two things, I think will help to improve the way that performance evaluations are done and factor into this. And I think it's starting to happen, and Jeannie referenced that. Two other things. One, I feel a little bit like we have to look at what our total compensation package is. And we're about to, pretty soon here, have an OPEP discussion where we talk about retirement. We talk about what is, and maybe it's not a promise, but what is that, that statement that we're making to a prospective employee who thinks, I'm going to stay there for thirty years? And part of that statement is about to go, you know, deflated a little bit somehow. I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. We're going to present options, and we're all going to talk about it and take it around. I think one thing that you can do is say, well, you can rest assured you're going to do a little bit better while you work here. You know, hey, it's not going to be, you're not going to get rich here. Everybody in this room can attest to that. You're not going to get rich working here. However, you know, you can rest assured that every year you're going to be making forward progress so long as you're giving one hundred and ten percent to us and to the people of Salisbury. So that's kind of my thought process and how the, the conversation that we're having about other benefits factors into this conversation. I don't know how valuable that is.
If, if it helps. My last company that I ran, when I took over, they had no performance evaluation system. And it was a total disaster. And I had the same kind of fears because they were used to, and, you know, getting the annual raises, and then we had an economic problem, and we had issues. It, it takes a while. It's like a culture change. It takes a while. It, it takes a while. It's like a culture change. It takes a while to say, you know, you're gonna be held for this number. Uh, or this range of numbers. And if you do this, it's a three or a four. And it can work, but I, I hear you, and I've been there and.
I was thinking too. Then I, and I don't know how, other than the things that Bill Garrett has put in place to quickly respond to the public, because to me, if the public were somehow engaged in how well this street looks, or this storm drain is, or the park, or, I mean, you know, our work here, you know, ours is set. We have elections, that doesn't mean we're gonna make any more money. But I know that money is a great motivator, an incredibly big motivator for people, and sometimes my personal feeling is that our employees don't always recognize that, A, it's not their money, it's not our money. And B, that the service that you're providing to the public, it, it's not just to your boss, or to the mayor, or to the city council. It's to those people who every year pay these property taxes. And if, if there was a way, and I, you know, it may just be an emotional, or, or a, you know, of a, a big poster, you know, inside, you know, like Laverne and Shirley when they went out of the house and kissed the Beatles, you know. Those people that you're out fixing, getting the tree root out of the, you know, picking up the recycling. Those are the people that if they are happy, and they are prosperous, and they love their city, that's gonna increase the value of what we assess. I mean, sometimes I, you know, I just wanna go down every once in a while with that, that billion-dollar number that is the assessment for the city and say, let me show you how this works, because I don't just come up with these numbers in my head. It is all based on how much this property is worth, times
Zero point nine.
Zero point nine something, or the tax rate, and then divided by a hundred or something like that, you know. I, I just.
It's not an emotional decision.
I, I understand that people don't get a piece for twenty-five years, because, you know, because you're gonna get a big raise, we all knew, you know, we, we know that. But I still think at the same time that feedback from parents to me, to my contemporaries, to my school, are also very good for motivating us in terms of how, of how we do our jobs.
I think we're on to something really interesting here.
No, no.
Well, we sent out articles regarding customer service and.
Yeah, surveys.
Yeah.
Looking at that as a plan.
Can take the pictures?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that.
What's that called? The mobile app?
Yeah, the mobile app. The mobile app's been great. However, I think you can take the mobile app further, with this new website that's under development. So I, I'm sure there's a city that's done this. I, I don't know if I've seen it, or if, you know, I'm just pairing what you're saying and things I've seen elsewhere, but, but imagine, you know, we've talked about the metrics and measuring, and, and we get reporting on that regularly, however, what if there was another element to all the metrics, which was just public feedback, which was public voting?
And survey, surveys.
Just, ju, you know, imagine that you could just say, you know, I'm gonna give that, like on Facebook where you do stars, and then you see the, you know, the, you know, total amount of, or the average rating being given. Imagine, you know, I'm gonna rate the service that I'm getting from, you know, the, uh, sanitation division.
We could leave a hand tag on the receptacle as we leave it, and they can do.
I do, we also have the opportunities and not just do it with residents.
Julia said there's lots of cities.
I was thinking, and I just wanna say this out loud, that you'll, all of you will go, wow, that came from Jim. But also members of industry would probably be helpful in knowing all the, all that a bunch of us did with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce downstairs, or Laura Kordakowski, with what she did with the chamber, trying to find ways to speed up processes. This is, this is Department of Redundancy Department, you know, that sort of thing. But if industry could also be, and I'm sure you, you get a lot of feedback on that as well. I'm done, I'm not gonna ask any more questions.
No, it's a good discussion.
It was, very good.
I'm just thinking of myself. How many times, I've done it, but very rarely, how many times have I said to somebody, you've done a great job? As opposed to, you didn't pick up my lawn, you know, you didn't pick up my trash, you, you, my, you ran over my cat, you know. Because the, usually the, the people who are unsatisfied, dissatisfied, are the ones that usually speak up. So how do you filter that? That's my problem, because I remember I used to go down and sit in the customer service center of the company. Just went down, I said, give me your headphones, and I would sit there and listen, and very rarely do we have somebody say, boy, you did a heck of a job. Uh, most of the time it was, my delivery was late, the guy wasn't, you know, nice, et cetera, but
Yeah, but you need to know that.
They're all good points. There, you know, you need to hear those things too, but you also have to have a counterbalance. So this, I struggle with this. Mayor can tell you, he and I have had discussions about this. How do, you know, just to be care, you know, this is a very, it's a, it's a great approach, and it works, 'cause I know it does, but it takes time.
And it's accountability too. You hold people accountable for their services rendered from the city. So when people, um, do their work, like, just like the sanitation, come and take your trash, do whatever. You can, you can say, oh, they're pretty, they're nice, they bring my trash can back. You go, then you hear some people say, oh, they took my trash dumpster, just threw it to the side of the road or whatever. And you can very well say, it was this time of the day, it was this person. You know who's working that time, you know, who's on that side of town.
Right, and those are things that we're looking forward to, to empowering our employees to fix the problems that they see on a daily basis. They don't have to wait for a phone call to come into Public Works to say, this is wrong, or that is wrong. We're moving to a model where they can fix the problem themselves. And then we can go out and survey that process, get the feedback, do more changing, and then continue the process, survey the process, and use all of those results as part of the metrics for their performance evaluations. For the whole department, for a section of a department. Let them have that level of competition. You know, the sanitation department, um, the recycling did better than this department. Those are all things in the future, but we have to get in stages to where we need to be. First thing on the list is, give our employees the opportunity to know, if you stay with us, there is a road ahead for you. Even if you stay in the same job, but you're the best at what you do. Not only would you get the opportunity to get this increase, there is meritorious opportunities as well. And that's what we're really looking to do, is to move our employees in a positive way forward, so that they have something to look forward to. And I understand, um, Councilman Irtan's concerns, and when you have nothing to give to an employee, and all you have is a performance appraisal, I think many times, management at that point in time would feel really like they're really pressing the employee downward further. No increase to give them, and on top of that, I'm gonna smack you with a number two on your performance evaluation. And so they get overinflated during those times when there's no money to give, and it's not attached to money, 'cause that's all they have to give them.
Does anybody remember off the top of their head what a one percent increase costs? Is it two, two ninety-seven?
Two thousand and eighty dollars for a one-dollar increase.
But just, the one percent increase.
One percent in salary is in the two hundreds. I don't remember exactly what. Well, no, it's less than that. It's, that, that's Water Source and General Fund, 'cause it's like three and change for two percent.
I was just wondering. It's like, if I remember, a hundred and fifty-nine, a hundred and sixty, something like that? I'm trying to remember.
Which, you know, assumes the economy's gonna get better and we're gonna be rising.
I have one, one thing on this. On, on your, how our pay system works on line twenty-two, where you crossed out twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, that's supposed to be thirty.
It's supposed to be thirty, not thirty-five.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
We have one more policy.
One more policy.
Well, I wanna get, I wanna make sure we have consensus on this one, no more questions.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Sure.
And our last policy that we have this evening to review is the military leave for training and weekend drill obligations. We currently have numerous staff who are attached to the military in, um, some form. It could be reserves, it could be, they've been deployed, they're back again, they're inactive, but they could be activated. As time goes on, rather than getting a two-week-a-year opportunity to, to do training, they actually are requiring and requesting them to do more than two weeks. The maximum we're looking at right now is thirty-nine days, which is well over a month. Now, it could come in little, two or three days here, two weeks here. But what we wanna do is make sure that our military staff, uh, in whatever level they're in, active or being ready to be called up for deployment, take advantage of those training classes. And what they have to do right now is, when they take that two weeks off, if they need to make up any difference in their paycheck, because it's not deployment, it's training, which is different. Deployment, we make up the difference between their paycheck with the service and what we normally would pay them. So, but for training, we don't make up that difference. We provide fifteen days, and that's it. And what we wanna do is supply them with more days, so they don't have to cut into their own time in order to beef up their salary for that time period. 'Cause there's a lot of expenses that go along with that, that are not covered by the military.
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
In fact, it's thirty-nine days is the minimum anybody has.
Yes, yeah.
The minimum annually anybody has. So fifteen days is only annual training, eight days they call it. Um, so if I can suggest just a, a couple edits
Okay.
from what's, um, what's shown here. I would just stri, strike the first sentence, uh, that says, no more than fifteen days of paid military time may be used for military leave for training purposes in a calendar year. And I would add to the next.
What line are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on line eleven and twelve.
Okay.
I would add to paid military leave may, scratch the word also, may be used toward weekend drills or military leave for training purposes, where the employee is scheduled to work, and leave it all the same after that. Blah, blah, blah. Down on line fourteen, scratch the words weekend and drill. And then on line fifteen and sixteen, strike that sentence. I think it achieves the same thing, it just clarifies, instead of breaking it out into.
Okay, two things.
Bottom line is, if they're not scheduled to work, they're not eligible to get paid. So if they, for example, if I work nine-to-five, Monday through Friday, or eight-thirty to four-thirty, Monday through Friday, and my training is on Saturday and Sunday, City Salisbury doesn't, I'm not gonna get paid by the City of Salisbury. Nor should I. But if it's on Friday, I shouldn't have to use personal or sick, or sick leave. And I should get military leave.
My screen keeps going dead, so I can't get to the.
Mine does the same thing.
Does it?
It goes out, comes back.
So I'm gonna ask a question that I should know, but I was gonna look up. Um, notification, uh, is required, obviously, and proof of training, correct?
They should be able to produce a training schedule at the beginning of the year that covers from October to October.
Great, okay.
And, and they should be able to produce orders for their annual training. And if not, they shouldn't get.
But what if they tra, changed their training? 'Cause they do change the training.
They'd have to give us the change orders.
Yeah, my daughter is in the military, and they change their training from time to time.
It takes an, it doesn't actually take an act of Congress, but it takes a lot to change a training schedule.
They do, it's serious.
Do we have any idea how many people we have?
Eleven.
Eleven. And where are they?
With the drills.
The fire department and the police department.
There is really where my concern is. Personally, if the mayor has got to go to training, the mayor still gets paid by the City of Salisbury. I don't know why we're not doing that. And I don't even know why we're worrying about this, but I know this, that from department heads, because most of the military people are in these two departments, it causes havoc
Yes.
for these departments. It causes both the fire chief and the police chief to have to say to the mayor, well, I don't have enough people here.
To cover this.
To cover this. So in my opinion, this type of service is the same thing as a sick child, a newborn child. To me, service is service. And we should, and, and the word isn't generous, but we should be doing exactly what we do for other, for other people who have responsibilities, whether it be, 'cause FMLA isn't.
It's twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks.
It's twelve, but is it?
It's paid if you have time.
This, this is covered under UCER, a, a different, different law.
That's fine, I just. God giveth on one hand and he takes away on the other. We should be doing everything we can to make it possible for them, but we should also be looking for ways of making up the difference in those departments. Because I, and I'll say this, and it may sound a little uncomfortable, no one's going to take someone to task for going out on military leave, even though the department was short-some. We're not gonna talk about that.
Allow me to, if I can.
We can fix that.
Well, allow me to, if I can. Let, let me, because I think the onus is on the individual. Because, think about this. You get your training schedule in September, meaning you should be able to schedule your entire year. Entire, I, I've never, not once ever, had a, in seven and a half years, had a training schedule change.
It was a drill.
I've never, right, I've never had a drill change.
I, I had someone work for me, and oftentimes hers would get changed, 'cause she was in counterintelligence.
And I've just never, I've never had it happen.
So she wasn't allowed to tell you why or when?
No, she would, but she would bring me the paper when we would turn it in.
All of it be a counterintelligence too. But the, the onus should be on the employee to plan out their year, and if something changes, then, you know, you, yeah, special circumstances, okay. But you get that information, and I'll tell you right now, just, you know, soldiers that have worked for me, I guarantee you, I know what happens to most of those drill schedules. Fold it up, I'll see it next month. I'll pull it up when I think, oh man, do I have to go away this weekend, pull it out and look at it, right? But, but the responsibility has to be on the individual, not on the City of Salisbury, not on the department head, not on the manager, or the, you know, shift supervisor, or whatever. You know, frankly, that's on the individual, and.
So are we going to the number of days that you said, what, thirty-nine?
The base number of days.
So you want us to increase this from fifteen to thirty-nine?
Yeah, mhm, you should.
And, and I think in most cases, there's no way anyone would ever use thirty-nine, because there, there's no way they're scheduled to work, they would happen to be scheduled to work every single time that they're, you know what I'm saying?
Right, for their drill.
In fact, they should plan things enough, far enough out, that they wouldn't be scheduled to work.
But see, now, they can't change their schedule necessarily.
Understood.
Because.
It would coincide sometimes.
You know, they're in a little wolf pack.
It would coincide, like, let's say, you know, B-shift is on, you know, B-squad is on. That shift for that weekend, three months from now, you can see it, say, oh, there's an overlap, but, okay, it may mean you get paid leave, but it also means we could schedule somebody in your place, 'cause I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right, 'cause you have to have overtime, and usually you're hitting overtime by that point.
All right.
Consensus?
Yep.
Consensus on the first, consensus on all, all three? Okay, we have consensus. Thank you, Ms. Lily. Appreciate it very much.
You are certainly welcome, ladies and gentlemen. See you next time.
Okay. We will now, I will now recognize Mr. Mayor Boda for a discussion to present his.
I think we had, had brought up a couple weeks ago to discuss toy guns and some of the BB guns, and I, I don't know if Mr. Tillman had time to look at anything on what we're allowed to do as far, I know that there's some federal regulations that already cover some of this stuff, and I'm well aware.
I don't believe we asked him to do any.
I, I have not researched what we can and cannot do at this point. So you need an essential question from us this evening?
Research.
Well, I guess what is the question?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's been brought up from, to me, from several residents, concerns about, you know, some of the issues across the country with kids who, Baltimore, there was a kid that was killed, or shot, and hurt pretty bad. Cleveland, there was a child killed by the police. Cleveland, there was a child killed by the police. Are we allowed to put any restrictions on the sale of these, or, or anything on, as far as, like...
The answer that I'm with is, in other states, there have been restrictions put on, but I'm not sure what Maryland, whether Maryland would let us do the same. So, I don't think there's a federal prohibition at this point, but I haven't researched it, to come to know for sure. But yes, they have done something similar to that in other states.
I know some cities have, you know, I know that there's been some...
Yeah, it may, it may have been done by cities, but that's what I mean. But in other states, it's been done, I'm not aware that it's been done. I don't, I don't have any information about Maryland itself at this point.
Can we concurrently ask the police chief for...
She's supposed to have been here today, too.
Okay. But just for next time, when we put it on again, for relevant data on the area?
I didn't authorize the police chief being here, only because I wanted to see what the questions were, so if we can pull questions together, we'll bring her in next time.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate, uh, to have our discussion come...
Happy to bring her here.
Formulate what we...
Yeah, 'cause she hadn't even done any research anymore.
No, yeah, she hasn't.
Yeah, I, I would ima- I, I'd like to find out, I mean, I can think of some examples in the past where, did this, did this person have a gun? Did it end up being a toy gun? I don't know whether or not, what I recollect as things that I've heard in the media throughout, you know, across the country, or whether or not there are things here. I don't know whether or not in the reports that officers file, is there anecdotal evidence that says there was a gun, it looked like a gun, in the end, it didn't end up being a gun? That's, that's...
Are we talking about, like, putting the orange...
Yes.
Pieces? 'Cause, I mean, toy guns, for a long time, have been sold that way, but are we talking about pellet guns?
That's more...
Yeah, the pellet guns.
So, we're talking about the real pellet guns, that really aren't toys, in my mind?
Yeah, they're not toys, and they're not really guns. Because they're, they're not gonna, if you do point it at someone else, they're... But I know that, you know, Amazon, I think I saw, that they put orange stripes on the ones that they sell now. From what I understand, I don't know if that's, that's what...
But will that prevent an officer from...
There's two different, it's two different things. It's, that's apples and oranges, in my opinion.
Well, what I'm just saying, if, if, if we're trying to stop, prevent them from selling the guns, and even if they do, or if they don't, if they still had the orange piece on it, are we, is it, is it a safety measure that we're looking for?
Would they see it?
Yeah, would they see it, yeah.
I, it, it's not as simple, when you start to think about it.
It's not.
Give you an example, we ban it, we ban it in Salisbury, and you go to Fruitland, or you go to Delmar, and you buy, again...
It's not...
County.
What do you do? Uh, you know, should it be a state, you know, there's, there's many, many levels of it. I think Mr. Irtan's point is a, is a good point, and that is, let's get some research on what states have, have it. Has it been successful by metrics? Have they have, you know, we used to have this number, and now we've got this number, or whatever it is. Get some background information, so we can discuss it intelligently. Find out, Mr. Tillman, if you could find out, are there laws on the books? How do they look? Uh, is there a federal, some kind of federal law? It certainly is a hot topic, 'cause I've gotten emails, phone calls, et cetera. So, um, and I think it's worth looking at.
Yeah, it is.
But I think we need to know what we want out of this whole thing, and have a legitimate, logical discussion.
Yeah, I can't wrap my head around the episode, you know, is this, or, is the world turning into an episode of The Wire, and that's really not what's happening out in, in the, in the street right now? You know, I, I, it, it is, it's hard to explain to people that the crime rate's at a thirty-year low, and you walk outside, and people just think every, everything that goes bump in the night is...
Yep.
It's out to get them.
And now we have clowns.
Oh, great.
And now we have...
Oh, my God.
You know, I don't, I just don't, I don't...
For purposes of, of bringing the chief into the conversation, would the questions that are being posed to her be, um, what is the police department's history on collecting these items?
Yes.
Maybe what are peer departments doing?
Right.
And are there any known incidents, or near incidents, that we've had?
That's it.
Okay. That's what I'll have her come in and prepare to talk about. Peer jurisdiction. And then, um, and then maybe it's more appropriate for Mr. Tillman to look into what's Maryland done, or doing, what's the federal government done or doing? Um, and can we legally, in Maryland, create a law that, at the municipal level, that says it's illegal to sell a certain type of toy, or real, you know, BB gun, pellet gun, with, or without certain coloring or...
One more thing that we add to that, are we talking about trying to regulate possession of, or sale?
Okay, that was my second piece of...
Yeah, I, I was looking more at what's being sold in, in the stores. Possession, I mean, that's, that, that's another, that, that's a whole nother monster. I don't, I don't know if we really want to...
You know, does it come down to, you know, toys that were forty-five years ago, we all played with, and now you find out, you know, they were coded, and this or that? Is, is, is this just another natural step to saying, you know, "These are things that can harm your children, and we need to help you make sure that your children don't get harmed by accident?" Or that, you know, it gets taken somewhere else, you know, and it ends up in a, in a situation with long course...
My, my mom and dad didn't need any help.
My mom had a light hairbrush, and that's how we got through the seventies.
They let me know loud and clear that I don't get a, a pellet gun.
I know that, you know, some, some of these, the, especially the pellet guns and the BB guns, they have, I mean, they use them for training. Uh, so I know a lot of the training facilities use them when people wanna get, wanna learn how to use a gun. So, there, there's legitimate uses for them. I know, you know, people...
They're legitimate uses for handguns.
It's Olympic sport.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so I, I think it's, as far as just outright possession, you know, I just think of what's, uh, what we're, what we're putting out, what we're selling is, I mean, does it have to look exactly like...
A real gun.
A real gun.
Yeah.
I think that's the, uh, uh, that's the issue, that I think a lot of...
Can it be identified?
There's obviously a market for the ones that look like a real gun.
Oh, yeah.
What thirteen-year-old boy doesn't want one?
I always wanted the ones that looked like a real thing.
Yep.
That's the problem.
That's the thing.
I mean, I'm just, I'm feeling the back of my broken tooth right now, where mine ricocheted and broke my tooth off, so... Your subject has reminded me of that.
Your mother and father didn't tell you, that's all.
And can I, I don't wanna jump to the conclusions, or, but, um, one question that I might have is, if you go far enough down this path, and you start getting to legislative solutions, is one of the paths potentially, well, we've found, you know, whether or not a Salisbury law would be effective, or even a county law would be effective, we've found that we think Maryland's law is inadequate, and we wanna rally our lobbying efforts around state or federal. I, I think exploring this could expose kind of what potential solutions and where the need is.
Yeah, agree.
I think it's also important, i- if anything, we're, we're, we know it's an issue, and hopefully, parents can use this to at least educate their children. Don't point your guns at people, definitely don't point them at the police. But at least, you know, there needs to be that discussion in the community as far as safety.
Okay, then, we have questions for the chief, which the mayor will get for us, and, uh, Mr. Tillman, you have a couple things you need to look up, and then we'll discuss this again. It'll be on the next work session agenda, okay?
Speaking of those agendas...
Yes, sir.
With all due respect to, and, and love and admiration of all those involved, could we put on the next work session agenda an update on the fire service agreement, where we are with the consultants, and what the timeline is for decisions? I didn't wanna do that right now.
I can do it right now.
Can you?
But, well, yeah, I can. But, a contractual agreement that we entered into is that the next step is, they have to make a presentation to the steering committee, and then they, the consultants. Then they have to make a presentation to the city and county councils. Now, you know, city and county councils can decide to do that together in the room at the same time, which I think could have a lot of value.
I think that would be a good idea.
Or it could be separate.
I think it'd be circus, but I'm in.
Yeah, I think it could be a circus, or the...
I'm in for a good circus every once in a while.
But I think that could be valuable. So, we haven't gotten that presentation yet, and we've tried to schedule it, and we need to, it needs to be scheduled very quickly.
Yeah, because budget, budget times now, everybody's starting to see the budget, starting to start here in a month or so, or even, I'm sure preliminary you already have, which means the county already has two, so that information needs to be, I, I say this, not for me, it needs to be given publicly to the city taxpayers, that need to be...
I agree.